Call of March 11th, 2019, City Council committed the whole meeting to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Borowitz.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Crawford.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Alderman Freeman will be absent. Porter.
Here.
Ratcliffe.
Here.
Sanderson.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you, welcome everyone. Before we get started, I wanted to propose that we move item five under other A, B, and C to the front page under item B. That way we'll have continuity with the two appointments. Anybody have any objections to that? Okay. So first up, under public comment, Andy Race has comments he'd like to make. Would you please come up? Mr. Race, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Andy Race. I live at 1716 Eighth Avenue. I'm here to remind everybody in Belvidere, including the City Council and the people assembled in this room this evening, that spring is in the air, which is a Boone County Council on Aging supper, okay? Roast beef, fried chicken, all you can eat, fifteen dollars, and it's on Tuesday, March the 26th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., okay? Now, if you wait until the last day to purchase your ticket, then it's seventeen dollars, okay? So you gotta buy them now. They're really cheap, fifteen dollars, such a deal, okay? And it's for a good cause. You know, the Boone County Council on Aging does such a good job for the people in Boone County, okay? And we appreciate your support. So thank you for your consideration and help us out and buy some tickets. Whether you buy them from me or you buy them from someone else, it doesn't matter. Just buy them, okay? Thank you.
Okay, Andy, thank you. Under public forum, we have none this evening. Under reports of officers, boards, and special committees, building, planning, and zoning unfinished business, we have none. Under building, planning, and zoning new business, we have a few items. First up is the appointment of Kip Countryman as Director of Buildings. In your packet, you will have seen the retirement notice from Ms. Morlock after seventeen years of service to the city. And so at this point, I would entertain a motion for the appointment of Kip Countryman as Director of Buildings.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Brooks. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Mr. Countryman is here in the audience. Should you like to question him directly?
And Mr. Mayor, the memo also points out the fact that Ms. Morlock will be vacating her position here in City Hall at the beginning, at the end of April. However, she'll be on vacation the entire month of April. So the motion includes, as set forth in the memo, bringing Mr. Countryman onboard at the beginning of April, so we'll actually have a building inspector in the building during that time.
Questions or comments, Mr. Countryman? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval? Alderman Porter?
Well, I just wanted to ask a question here, I guess. His, I went over his resume and looked at everything that's really good on the resume and everything. But I am questioning the salary. You know, Lisa worked for the city for seventeen years, and her dedication, you know, built up the time, or built up to her current salary, you know, over time. And I was wondering, you know, about starting him out at the same salary that she was making. That was kind of a, maybe a slap in the face to her, to the time that she spent, you know, with the city, you know, building up to that salary. I was wondering if there might be a more reasonable salary that you could start out with, you know, like her starting salary and then account for inflation and, of course, experience.
Okay. Just a moment. Yes, Alderman Crawford? Yeah, I'd be happy to discuss that with you. Mr. Countryman was making more than Ms. Morlock in his current position, his position in Rochelle. He's willing to take a cut in pay to come here. And so in our negotiation, we think this is a fair salary.
Mr. Mayor, I'll also point out that Ms. Morlock, when she started with the city, started as a zoning inspector and worked her way up. She's only been incumbent in the position a relatively short time. Certainly, we couldn't start him out at the salary of a zoning inspector, because that's not what the job entails.
Becky?
I would also point out that she did not hold some of the certifications that Kip does. She was not a certified commercial inspector, and he is.
George?
Yeah, I was just gonna say too, he was a director in Rochelle, so he has plenty of experience to start at that pay.
Alderman Snow?
And can you give us the logistics? He's starting in April, correct? And he's gonna work the month of April at what salary? And then with that occurring, is that subject to the 2% increase that's built into the budget?
The salary starting April will be the same salary he'd make in May, or I'm sorry, at least will be receiving, at 71,793. He'll, on effective purposes, be the Director of the Department, running the Department. She in name will be, because she will not be effectively retired until the end of April, but he'll be the one running the Department. I'd also point out that the only other inspector in that department resigned a few weeks ago. So there are no inspectors in that department in Lisa's absence.
Yes.
What about the 2% cost of living increase, or the rate?
I prefer that's the Director. Becky?
That was what was negotiated. At that time, on May 1st, he would increase to the 73,228.
He has, Kip had experience here with Steve before he went to Rochelle. And in Rochelle, his duties have been manyfold, public works, planning, city administration, basically. So we were tickled to death to be able to get somebody of his experience that lives right here in town, and we think he's the best choice for the position.
Mr. Mayor, to the level of the salary, I mentioned that we lost the only other inspector in the Department recently due to resignation. He didn't really want to leave. He left to another municipality for about a 25% increase in salary, because we weren't paying the comparables to what they're paying in close proximity. So he received an offer of about 25% more, and obviously, we couldn't match that. So he left to that other municipality.
Additional questions or comments? Motion now on the floor?
My only question is answered. Where is he at?
Okay, he does. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is passed unanimously. Thank you, Kip. Under B, we have Resolution 2090-2019. It's a resolution directing the Planning Department to publish the zoning map of the city of Belvidere. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Borowitz. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Alderman Sanderson?
Just a quick question. What's, has anything changed down here?
No. First, state law municipalities, not counties, but municipalities, have to officially adopt their zoning ordinance and repu, or zoning map and publish it every March. So this map reflects all the zoning amendments that were done in 2018 and 2019 up until this point, but it's not rezoning anything that hasn't already been previously approved by City Council.
Okay. Additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed unanimously. Next, if you'll flip over and go to five other, under A, resolution authorizing the execution of a real estate purchase agreement between the city of Belvidere and Belvidere Bank and Trust as trustee of trust number 1236 and Gerald Rao, which is the parking lot that we have been discussing. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Brooks. Questions or comments? Alderman, no.
And just so everybody knows, it's for 75,000, is that correct? And we're gonna not make payments. We're gonna pay it out of reserves at this point.
Yes, that's true. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Yes, Alderman Stevens?
I'm still questioning the whole thing that that used to be an auto salvage yard from the 60s clear back and what's underneath of it. I mean, I know we have a letter from the EPA, but I also know that when the EPA changes, like it has when I've been on the city-county coordinate, it requires a whole bunch of things. So I'm really hesitant in buying a piece of land that could be, you know, contaminated quite severely.
Well, all I can tell you is the EPA has been very stringent in their oversight, and they have found nothing to back that up, so.
The contract also calls for Phase One environmental study, which is often now referred to as the all-appropriate inquiry. That will, of course, turn up, what we already know is there is a no further remediation letter. We've seen that one, which basically is your get-off-free jail card, as long as you don't disturb the cap. There is no further liability with respect to the property. The all-appropriate inquiry also is an exception on Circa, which then makes the party that conducts the AIA immune from potential liability with respect to environmental issues under the ground. So as long as you do that study, which we're going to do under the contract, we're immune from fines and things like that through the EPA.
But what level of, do we have to do to do the actual boring down to find out what's under there?
You don't have to do any. Phase one's a-
Phase one, phase two, three?
No, phase one only, to get the AIA.
I'm more worried about what's actually under there than doing a paper chase.
You asked about the EPA. To satisfy the requirements, we only have to do the phase one.
Alderman Snow?
And who's paying for the phase one phase inspection?
If I recall correctly, it was split between the two parties.
Fifty-fifty.
And if a phase two is required for whatever reason, then it's a negotiation at that point.
Right.
And I guess another question. So when we're talking about the cap itself and not disturbing the ground, so if later, 10 years down the road, 20 years down the road, we decide we do need to actually do more than just resurface, so is that gonna be permissible? Will we be able to take out what's there and lay down as long as we don't bore down below the existing gravel?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, well, part of the obligation of having the cap is maintaining the cap, so you have to maintain the parking lot in its status. Why I talk about infringing upon the cap is if you were trying to build that, dig down and put a building in there with foundations and things like that, then you have to go back and address those issues with the EPA as far as amount of amendments or a change to the no further remediation letter.
Brent, do you have anything to add to that?
No, just a follow-up correction. We will be, if we have to make improvements going forward, whether we expand the parking area, if that need arises, then whatever that work is done, as long as we have the cap in place at the end. And the materials that we excavate, depending on what, how far, where we're going to excavate, may have to be disposed of in accordance with the requirements, but there are requirements there for us to comply with.
Okay. Alderman Sanderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Could there be any problems with the DNR, like someone besides the EPA that could give us a problem about that? I guess I, you know, because of the river being right there. I think that's one of my biggest concerns, is we're by the river. Could we have any other agency make us do remediation, have leakage into the river from that?
No, even that would be covered by EPA. DNR would cover things, like if you want to put a dock in there, or change the shoreline, change the elevations of the property, which you wouldn't do anyway, because of the NFR. Then you'd involve the DNR, but as far as environmental issues go, that's all EPA.
So we, like if we wanted to have that as a public thing, where in the future, if we build up downtown down there, we couldn't have like a dock down there then?
I'm not saying you can't. I'm just saying that's, those are the kinds of issues that the DNR would be involved in. A simple dock, no, I don't think that'd be much of an issue there at all.
If we wanted to put a boat ramp or a dock, we would simply have to consult with all the agencies involved and get their permissions. There would be no, nothing in the history of it to say that that's not allowed if we get the permissions, so. Additional questions or comments? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, we have one no by Alderman Stevens. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution reauthorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement for the creation of the Northern Illinois Land Bank Authority, which we previously approved by Resolution 2085-2018. And the reason for this, very simply, is we were the first to approve the land bank, facilitating the formation of the land bank. And post our approval, the city of Rockford wanted to make some slight language changes so that we're all on the same page. We just are asking our reauthorization, so it all matches. Motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Ratcliffe, second by Alderman Snow. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Yes, Alderman Sanderson?
I guess maybe, I, maybe this might be for C, too. But the main thing was, is how many people are we gonna have as our representative? Just one, or?
What?
Because I know some other places and no, nothing to say against anybody we've proposed, has people from the, you know, like the real estate agencies and stuff like that keep an eye on things for, like eminent domains, abuses, and stuff like that, and other parts of the state that have similar things, I was told.
Well, no. The only trustees are those appointed members of the board themselves to the board themselves. And so I don't know what you're talking about, real estate oversight or whatever. I'm not aware of that, that they have oversight over something.
So will things come back to us, then, Your Honor, after approval? Do we still get final approval on stuff at the council level?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's, thanks.
Our trustee is representing us as our trustee, who's appointed to the board by Alderman Snow?
So I guess for clarity, when, when they are gonna take action, particularly in Belvidere, they're, we're gonna see a proposal that we're gonna purchase such-and-such property at this amount?
Okay, here's the way it would work. If there is a proposal in front of the board to acquire property, it goes to the full board for a vote. John would come back to us and say, here is the proposal that they are making concerning purchase of property, which at that point, we can have a say-so in how we would like him to vote, because he's our trustee. His appointment gives him the right to vote for us.
So he doesn't really bring it back to us? He can let us know what it is?
He can let us know what it is, and then go from there.
And how long is the appointment? Is it ongoing until he decides he doesn't want to do it, or what's the, just, I know a lot of commissions, they have expiration dates. I just wanted to throw that out there, just so we're all on the same sheet of music.
It's a three-year appointment. It was in your packet?
And how many people are on the whole board in the first place? I know Rockford-
There is one trustee per member.
And how many members are there at this, at this point?
As many as we can get in Northern Illinois, as many cities and counties as want to be part of the land bank will be gladly accepted.
Now, we have four.
I believe-
Rochelle, was it Rochelle? No, it was Rochelle, it was-
Rochelle isn't a member yet. We have the city of Rockford, we have Boone County, we have the city of Belvidere, we have the city of Freeport.
There was a Freeport.
And I believe we have County Stevenson County, and we're waiting till Winnebago County gets it all hashed out, as to what they're, they're doing.
So basically, what'll happen is John will, John will come back to us, but that's only one vote.
That's correct.
Okay. So we can't, like if this affects Belvidere, and we have some reason to be against it, and the rest of the board, even maybe John might be against it, they could still override us to do the purchase?
The, the only thing the land bank can do essentially is buy it or obtain property, maintain it or improve it, and sell it. No different than any other developer or any other entity that wanted to buy or hold land anywhere in the state. The difference being, because of the way they're created, they have the ability to take advantage of certain tax advantages and things like that, to try and clean up the property quicker. It basically clears title, makes it easier to sell the property in the future. So in that sense, they are in the same boat as any other developer in the state, if they can afford to buy the property, and then they still have to comply with all your zoning laws, all of your building codes, everything else like that. It's not like they're exempt from anything. But yes, they can go in there and buy it. If the city does not like the way the land bank is operating, it always has the ability to terminate its relationship and withdraw from the, from the land bank.
But there's no problem with eminent domain, if there was some kind of eminent domain, that would just be purchase of property, not eminent domain things?
That's correct.
They don't have authority for eminent domain, right?
No, unless we give it to them.
Okay.
No, not unless it's given to them.
That's what some people said, so I want to make sure.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, good.
So I'm assuming that since this is a governmental, intergovernmental meeting or agreement, then any meetings they have would be open to the public unless they had an executive session? And would those, with all the municipalities, be able to post those and where and when those would be?
That is true. Additional questions or comments concerning item B, reauthorization of the IGA? Yes, Alderman Frank?
Not an important question, but were there other people that were narrowed down to one?
That are what?
Were there other people that wanted to do this, then it was just narrowed down to one?
Is John the only?
After we, we talked about what we thought would be most appropriate, what we were looking for was someone with an impeccable record, who had business experience in our community. And also, John is, is the president of the Growth Dimensions Board, so that, to me, was the best person for the job, and that's why I asked to appoint him. So we're still voting on B, so do I have, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And then C would be, a resolution appointing John Wolfe as the trustee of the Northern Illinois Land Bank Authority.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, they all made the motion. May I have a second? Okay. Alderman Borowitz. Question, questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You are now appointed, John. Thank you so much for your service. You will be Monday night. Well, Monday night, excuse me. Appreciate it. Okay, so let's now go to Public Works unfinished business. We have none, and under Public Works new business, Mr. Anderson?
We have a list. First up on the, on the list is the upgrade for our WWTP lab equipment. Our existing fecal coliform testing procedure and equipment is outdated, and we do need to replace that equipment. We've got a proposal from IDEXX Laboratories for the new fecal coliform testing equipment. It's much more accurate and more efficient than the methods that we utilize now. I would recommend approval of the purchase of fecal coliform testing equipment from IDEXX Laboratories in the amount of $6,880.10. It does include a four-year extended warranty. The equipment will be paid for from line item 6158206812. If you look at the attached quote, the warranty is $750 for that four-year warranty. And the best part about that warranty is if, for any reason, there's an issue or problem with the equipment, they overnight express ship a new replacement unit, so that our daily testing that we are required to do is not lost. So it's, it's a very good piece of equipment, and I would recommend approval.
Motion out of committee? Excuse me. May I have a motion to approve? Okay, motion is moved by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Ratcliffe. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved.
Next up, memo on your packet, water model update for the southeast side. Our existing water model does not extend past our current developments on the east side, and in order to facilitate the order of the expansion of our water system in that area, we need to update our model to provide our framework for our main extensions, our sizing, our well supply, and our water storage needs. The area basically will be the balance of that area from Business Route 20 slash General Road East to where Logan and US Route 20 come together. We have a corridor study that was approved by IDOT, which shows the intersections and things and layouts in that area, and we would develop the water model based on those, on that approved corridor study. Strand and Associates is our keeper of our water model, and their proposal to do this work is $9,100. I would recommend approval, and we will pay for it from line item 6158106040.
Motion out of, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, I've got to skip taking a motion. Who has got a motion for me tonight?
I got a motion.
Sanderson, second?
I'm second.
Alderman Crawford. Questions, comments? Alderman Sanderson?
Thank you. So one of the reasons for doing this, Brent, is, you know, is our pressure getting low if we do any expansion, or where's the other most east well that we have in that area by Walmart and all that stuff?
Well, we already have a well site established when we did the Farmington subdivision. We acquired property through the subdivision process for the location of a well. So we know where that well site's gonna be. It would just be a question of when the demand's gonna get to that point where it's gonna be need to be installed. But basically, this will provide the framework, similarly to what we've done in West Hill, similarly what we've done to the south, southwest side of town. We're starting to see some inquiries on developments east of the Walmart property, and those areas right now are not mapped out for the water and sewer. So that's the reason, it's the impetus to do this now, at this point in time. And once this work is done, then we'll incorporate the cost estimates for that framework, and then we'd establish a connection fee for the acreage for development within this area.
Is that commercial and retail?
It includes everything according to the zoning map. So yeah, there's some commercial, there's retail, there's some light industrial, I believe, in some of those areas, too, that are being discussed, as well as multifamily and single family.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is carried.
Next on the list, purchase of a hook lift system for Street Department Truck 79. Unfortunately, when we were out in one of the many snowstorms, we were playing with Truck 79, which had the chipper box on it, and we caught a low-hanging branch in a terrace tree, which damaged our chipper box, and we need to replace that. In looking at that replacement, what we would like to replace it with is a hook lift system for the truck. Attached to the memo is some literature on the stellar system, which is what we're recommending. If you go to the second, the second page there, which is the multi-pictured one, it shows all the different body configurations that are available for such a system. It would make the truck much more efficient for us. We could use it for a lot of different scenarios, as I listed in the memo. It could include a dump box, a chipper box, a flatbed, salt spreader, a roll-off container. The cost for the equipment, we've got two proposals for the hook lift system, $44,807 from Benell, $45,261 from Monroe. Funding would come from, and we've received a check from our insurance company for the damage to our existing chipper box of $16,200. And then when we purchased our end loader earlier this fiscal year, we still have a remaining balance of $49,500 from that purchase. So I would recommend approval, a proposal from Benell Industries in the amount of $44,807 to furnish and install a stellar shuttle 8410 Flex Hook Lift System on our truck number 79, which includes a Duraclass Dump Body and a- Duracast Dump Body and a chipper box. And like I said, the cost breakdown would be capital funds, $28,607, and our insurance check of $16,200.
Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Crawford, second. Alderman Frank, questions or comments? Alderman Sanderson?
Just a quick one. So, that chipper box, is that like, like, what are, the container that's shown on the back page of the truck on Page Three? Is that what the chipper box is?
The chipper box is, will basically be a, it'd be like a dump box, a box container, and then the back end is open. So, there's a roof on the top, and the back end's open where the chips go in from the chipper.
We're going to need to buy some more equipment to use with this, because it looks like you can use different things on it.
Exactly. So, we will budget over time and purchase additional accessory attachments, boxes, if you will. It comes, this price includes the dump box and the chipper box, which we'll use probably a majority of the time, but as I outlined in the memo, there's several other options to get in there that we could utilize in all year round, including the salt spreader in the wintertime. And one of the most intriguing ones is probably going to be the roll-off box, because eventually, at the waste of our treatment plant, we will be able to dispose of our grit and screening solids with the use of a roll-off box, as opposed to the dump trucks that we are currently using.
Alderman Snow?
And what kind of warranty?
Standard warranty, I'd have to check. It's at least, it's either 12 months, it could be up to 36 months on some of it, but I know it's at least 12 months.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved unanimously.
Next is our Farmington Pond's 2019 Maintenance Agreement. Again, there's the memo in your packet, and the proposal attached from Lakeland Biologists. The scope is basically the same as our previous years. There's been a slight increase, just a couple of the chemicals that are utilized. Their estimated cost is the same going forward as what we experienced last year, $15,100. I would recommend entering into an agreement with Lakeland Biologists for the 2019 Farmington Pond Maintenance Program at an estimated cost of $15,100, and we will pay for this from the Farmington Pond Special Service Area.
Motion to approve? Okay, motion by Tom, and second by Mark. Additional questions or comments? Yes, Mark?
Yes, thank you. So, that leaves $2,000 left in the service area for maintenance. Is there still some things to do? Does that include, like, maybe mowing and other things, or is that $2,000 not, is this what we needed it for, and that's it?
Correct. The $17,000 identifies what it is for the pond maintenance portion of it. There's additional costs in there for the mowing portion, and the electrical usage and so forth.
In that budget, in that particular line item?
Well, no, in the overall budget for the Farmington Pond's maintenance.
So, we have, this is normally what we would need for this, right? So, we have an excess of $2,000 that we could maybe take out of the budget?
Well, again, it's funded through the special service areas of the Farmington Pond Maintenance, so it's only going to be utilized for that.
Got to hold on to it for there.
Right.
Okay, I got you. Thanks.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Those opposed, nay?
Aye.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Next up is our sidewalk bids for 2019. The good news, well, good news is, last year, if you recall, we only got one bid. This year, we got six. The low bidder is from Addison, Illinois, Globe Construction. I would recommend approval of the low bid from Globe Construction in the amount of $57,180 for the city's annual sidewalk program. This work will be paid for from line item 05310-6003.
Motion to approve? Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments? Alderman Snow?
And Brent, I realize you got the quantities per square foot listed previous years, but what was our total last year, you know, relative to the $57,000? What were we at last year?
It was a little bit higher.
Additional questions or comments? Alderman Porter?
Yeah, does this cover all sidewalks, like in residential area two and city sidewalks? It's the, everything?
This covers your 50/50 program, is the majority of this program. It will also include the ADA sidewalks that we are required to do for, as part of our overlay program with motor fuel tax funds, as well as the repairs for water and sewer, where we have water service repairs and stuff, sidewalk replacement.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Those opposed, nay?
Aye.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Next up, the 2019 Tree Program bid tabulation. Two bids this year, Trees RS, Tree Care Enterprises. Would recommend approval of a low bid from Trees RS in the amount of $54,600 for tree work from May 1 of 2019 till April 30 of 2020, and this work will be paid for from forestry funds.
Motion to approve?
Motion.
Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Sanderson. Questions or comments? Alderman Porter?
Well, I just noticed, it looks like this is about $4,600 over budget. Is that correct?
According to what we show for the budget, that would be correct. However, we will, we will make our list accordingly as far as for tree work, so we'll stay within the budget.
Okay, do we have a lot of ash trees left that need to be cut down, or what is this going to be mainly for?
No, most of our, the majority of our ash trees have been removed to date. So, you'll notice that if you look, when we get to the budget review, the budget is down from $80,000, I think, to $50,000 this year, which reflects most, the majority of the ash trees being removed. So, this is for any dead or dying tree, terrace trees that need to come down during the year.
Questions, additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion is approved unanimously.
Next up is our annual mowing program bid tabulation. We will need separate motions for all these. The first one would be the low bid from Lawn Maintenance Services in the amount of $400 per mowing for the mowing of Water Department sites, and they will be paid for from 615-810-6040.
Motion, may I have a motion to approve, please? Motion by Alderman Sanderson, second by Alderman Borowitz. Questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Frank?
I had a question. Brent, when we were talking about the mowing, you were also talking about the herbicides. Is that the, like, the...
Yes, we, the mowing, the mowing includes, the mowing includes two applications of herbicides, which is basically control your dandelions and other broadleaf weeds.
The reason I ask that is because there's so much going on about the roundup with weeds and everything causing cancer.
We use appropriate chemicals for public spaces.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved unanimously.
Next one would be to approve the low bid from Lawn Maintenance Services in the amount of $480 per mowing for the mowing of our public work sites. This will be paid for from Street Department line item 015310-6002.
Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
By Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Porter. Questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried unanimously.
And our last mowing would be the approval of a low bid from Lawn Maintenance Services in the amount of $270 per mowing for the Farmington Ponds. This work will be paid for from the Farmington Pond Maintenance Funds.
Motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Borowitz, second by Alderman Crawford. Questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried unanimously.
And our last annual contract for review is our landscape maintenance program. Two bids this year, Lawn Care by Walter, $23,721. Lawn Maintenance Services, $26,000. I would recommend approval of a low bid from Lawn Care by Walter in the amount of $23,721 for the 2019 landscape maintenance program. This work will be paid for from Street Department line items 015310-6002 and 015310-6826.
Motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Ratcliffe. Questions, comments, further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried unanimously. Okay, Director Anderson, thank you very much. And since we already took care of A, B, and C under five, we will go directly to D, the financial year 20 budget and discussion. Ms. Tobin?
This meeting is usually where we leave it up to you all to decide what you would like to discuss, what you would like to see further. What I can show you, what I did for, to make it a little bit more simple, it's easier visually, if you can see the numbers right in front of you, what I did was I took the general fund recap, and I, all of the new initiatives, I went ahead and plugged into the budget, so you could see what it looks like if you were to approve everything, so then you could see what your balance in the general fund would be. So, if all the new initiatives were approved that we looked at two weeks ago, a month ago, two weeks ago, you would be able to see that you still, if you can see my little hand down here, let me try and make this bigger. You will see the remaining balance in the general fund is $30,138 to the good, is what that means. So, you would have, still have $30,138 to work with, or $30,138 to keep in your general fund reserves to use for capital projects next year. So, that's where we stand. I wanted you to see that. Would you like me to pull up the new initiatives list, so you can look at it again?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that. I just thought this was easier. You can see everything's plugged in there, that your balance now from here, if you want to take things out, you can take things out.
And I'm assuming that didn't include any more deficit spending or going out of reserves?
There's no deficit spending and no using of reserves for this budget. Oops, sorry. So, first off would be the Assistant Chief, if anybody wanted to address that.
I'd like to change the terminology and the way we think about that per the fire chief. Chief Heiser wants to refer to this position as Assistant Chief, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
As we talked about before, only $20,000 would be budgeted for this next fiscal year, for fiscal year 20, but you'd have to remember in fiscal year 2021 is where you would need to budget, actually, $113,124. So, just something to keep in mind. So, if you were to approve this in the budget, the $20,000, that doesn't necessarily mean everything's going forward. As the city attorney would tell you, you know, come June or July, we gave you a timeline a couple of weeks ago, a June or July would be when there would be an ordinance to create the Assistant Chief position. So, you'd be voting on that before anything would happen.
And I guess I have a question on this. So, not opposed to it at this point, but some of the logistics are vehicle. Obviously, he's going to need a command vehicle. What are we doing for that?
Yeah, we, eventually, we'd have to put him in his own personal vehicle. Right away, though, we'd be able to use a utility truck that we have. We already have it in the fleet.
At this point, in the near short term, for the first couple of years here, we wouldn't have to have another $100,000 vehicle budgeted in.
I don't anticipate that, no.
Yes, Alderman Crawford?
Yeah, I just want to say something. I'm totally for that, and we mulled around with this for years with Chief Worrell, that he needed an Assistant Chief, and it never happened, and it's about time now.
Additional questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Porter?
I'm sorry, Becky, I missed that. You said we'll be voting on this Assistant Chief in June or July?
So, if you approve the $20,000 in the budget, you're approving that expenditure for the firefighter that would need to be hired ahead of time? I could probably pull up that timeline again, if you would like to see that. Pull that up.
Under our current ordinances, there is no position called Assistant Chief or Deputy Chief. Before you actually made the appointment, you have to create the office through an ordinance, designating the duties of the position, creating the position, and then eventually authorizing the filling of that office. Most likely, it'd be very similar to the way we fill it for the police department with their deputy chiefs. If you look in your section on police, there's actually a section that creates the office of Deputy Chief. We don't have that for the fire department. So, first step would be to create that ordinance to create the office, and then you would fill it. So, the budget for this coming fiscal year has $20,000 set aside to hire a new firefighter, anticipating that when you do go to fill that Deputy Chief position, if you create it next budget year, you'll want to have somebody already trained and able to step onto the truck and take over the roles as a firefighter. Then, in the next fiscal year, you'd be funding the new position and filling the position if you create that office.
So, here's the timeline again up on the board, just to help you with what would happen over the next 12, 13 months. So, April 2020 is, which is our fiscal year 21 budget, is when you would be approving the expenditure that I just showed you, the $113,000 and some change for the Assistant Chief position.
Is that clear, everything that you needed to know? Okay, anything else you'd like to ask?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment on this. You know, I, we talked about this, and I know Alderman Stevens is, at least, I think he's still against this, but 95% of the time, I pretty much agree with everything that he has to say on certain issues. But I've looked this over, and you know, I voted no for this on the first time around, but now, that was because I didn't have any supporting evidence. And at this point now, looking at the surrounding communities, it looks like everybody in the surrounding communities has at least one fire chief, or Assistant Chief, with the exception of Marengo. And I think, you know, that at this point, I'm in support of it. I think it's, looks like it's probably the right thing to do if the other communities feel like that's a necessary position to, you know, be efficient and be the best that they can be. And I just feel that we need to support our fire and police departments 100%, and whatever we can do to help make them better is ultimately going to make public safety better, and that's a win-win for the citizens. So, I just wanted to comment on that.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Alderman Snow?
So, maybe, Becky, you could back up to, where did we get to $20,000? What exactly? I realize that there's going to be a firefighter hired, but obviously, that's, is this because it's going to wind up being halfway in the fiscal year, and we're looking at half the salary for that year?
We're looking at roughly around three months of salary plus benefits.
So, we're not going to have the new firefighter on for nine months after May 1?
Correct. We'll be looking at February, so February, March, and April, so they have three months under their belt and be trained by the time the Deputy Chief position, the time somebody was promoted to Deputy Chief, Assistant Chief.
Yes, Alderman Borowitz?
Hey, Becky, what's the salary for this position? I don't have it here in front of me.
The salary of which position? Assistant Chief? Assistant Chief, starting next May 1, we would be looking at $100,000.
That's probably around that.
Correct. And that is... And that is to fall in line with, you know, to give some parity between what your captains are making and also relative to what your chief is making. It's right in there.
Alderman Frank?
Well, I'm wondering if something could be a little bit cheaper if we were to hire more lieutenants. We only have three, and State Street doesn't have any lieutenants, right?
Yeah, presently, we run on a captain. Is the officer of the day down at Station 1, State Street? And then over at Station 2, we operate with the lieutenant. He's in charge over there on Sixth Street. Still, it doesn't... Alderman, it doesn't give us the administrative layer that we need, that we're presently doing without. Another lieutenant doesn't do me any good. I need somebody who's above the captain and in between me to give us that efficiency that we need in our fire department.
But can't lieutenants do paperwork and reports for you?
They're busy. They're busy right now. My captains, we've talked about this before too in previous budget talks, were the idea that the captains need to do more work. And I have actually got one of my captains right over here. They're extremely busy right now, running the shift. And I need people who can help me create policies, procedures, write grants, and all the different things that administrators do. And I, right now, I don't have that. And lieutenant would not be able to help me out in that regard. You're not trained at that, at the level that, like for instance, Mr. Shadle is over here, and it just wouldn't work out.
I understand that too, but I just hate to see this goes on every year till the end, and we're adding to the pensions and...
Mr. Mayor, the addition of an... Under the current May 1, 2018, so let's look at May 1, 2019, the addition of each lieutenant in salary alone would be an additional $81,000 under the current collective bargaining agreement. So if you're talking three lieutenants, one per shift, to have lieutenant each house, you're talking about $81,912 times three. If you're talking about administrative lieutenant, you're talking about $81,912. But they also get longevity on top of that, which brings it up. You're not talking about a big difference in value to the city. In addition, that position would be guaranteed over time if they worked more than they're allowed to schedule, where Deputy Chief, as the Deputy Chiefs of the Police Department will tell you, "Don't get overtime." So those are all factors you want to take into your consideration as well.
All right. I have a question for Attorney Drela then. What do we do about setting a precedent about starting a new position that we don't have?
You've created it. I don't understand what... We don't have a precedent. We create... I mean, if you create a position, you've created a position. I guess I don't understand the question, I'm sorry.
Solomon Porter?
Yeah, I just wanted to correct myself here. What I meant to say was Woodstock is actually the city that doesn't have an Assistant Chief. Marengo actually does.
Additional comments? Yes, Solomon Burks?
Actually, it's already included in the budget list. It can be proposed next Monday night.
If I may be permitted, I have a couple of observations I'd like to make. It has been my experience that the professionals will tell you when they need to change the way things are done. And I'm not going to second-guess my police chief or my fire chief or my public works chief or my financial director when they come to me, because they have the trained expertise and experience working in those positions to advise us as mayor and council about what they need to operate the city more efficiently, provide better service to our citizens. And we have struggled with, every time that we want to add a position, you have to understand, we're still about six positions short in administration. We're a position short in public works, and we've managed to learn how to deal with all of those kinds of things. But when there comes a point that we need to have the help to make our city better, I think it's a reasonable request from whatever department that it is. I don't see somebody coming and saying, you know, "We have to have this or else." We've been talking about an Assistant Chief in the Fire Department for 15 years, as long as I've been involved in the City Council or as mayor. And it had merit then. It has more merit now, because we have changed the way operationally that the department, under Chief Heiser, the way operationally the department functions. And captains and lieutenants take an active role every day in training and directing the shift and being the scene officer. So, you know, I've taken the time to really look at what's changed and why it's changed and how it's affected the performance of the department. Same thing with the Police Department. I take a look at how we operate and how efficient we are, and it all comes out in the bottom line with their annual reports of how effectively we fought fires, we've run medical calls when it comes to the Fire Department, the crime rate when it comes to the Police Department. And by funding them appropriately, when their leadership comes to us and says, "We think it's an idea to do this, we think it'll make the department better, and that we can provide better service." I have yet to see it not, when they've come to us and asked us for something. So, you know, I'm not going to try to micromanage people who are specialists in their fields. And I appreciate the fact that they have been patient with us as a mayor and council, as we have debated whether or not it's the appropriate thing to do about any number of topics. And I will repeat, I have yet to be steered wrong by the folks that we have put our trust in to take care of the citizens in this community. Alderman Snow?
And a couple of different things. One is, I understand your point of view on that, but I do... I get inquiries as to why do we need to add $100,000-plus person when everybody feels satisfactory in town, generically speaking, with the performance of the Fire Department? They don't see that if there's an issue or a problem and throwing another person at it will solve that problem, because they don't see it, okay? So I can see where, you know, it's you as an administrator and them as their own administration see issues and problems, the public doesn't, okay? The... One of the other things, in regards to, as we transition, and this happens obviously in the Police Department and other departments, when you go from the union to non-union, what happens pension-wise? And generically speaking, I would love it if we had a committee of the whole meeting at some point in the near future to discuss what does happen with all the pension stuff and our policy on sick leave and generic stuff that I get asked by people in town. So, "So how does this work?" And I have no idea. They're IMRF, they're in the union thing, they transition somewhere, things roll over, don't roll over. So just throwing that out there, that it would be nice to have that education. We don't have to do it tonight, but have that on a docket where we could discuss it and have an idea, so when we get asked.
Certainly, although I can answer one of the pensions right now. Fire and police pensions, they stay within the same pension fund. It does not migrate over. They're in the same pension fund. There's no double dipping, no second pension. They're still firemen, they're still policemen, so they stay within that pension fund.
And to your other point about people asking you... Well, we have a meeting every Monday night. We thoroughly discuss every expenditure in the city and the policies behind those expenditures. I feel it's my duty, in my position and your duty as alderman, to take away from these meetings the answers to when people ask you those questions. And to share with them what we learn every Monday night, when we have a meeting or when we dissect the budget. I mean, this isn't done in a vacuum. I mean, there are no untold items. Everything is totally clear to the public. They can see any document, they can look at our budgets, they can talk to any of our folks, and it's kind of all of our job to learn the stuff we need to learn so that we can share with our constituents why we do the things we do and how they're done and why it costs what it does. And I would again point out, every time that we come to this budget discussion and we look at comparables of what... There's this $100,000 thing that seems to freak people out, okay? $100,000 in today's world is not exactly make-you-rich person. A lot of the salary items are the result of years and years of service. 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. Comparably, we don't pay as much as other cities our size, and yet we still manage to perform at a level higher than most other cities. There comes a point where we're very fortunate to be able to keep the people that we're able to keep that work for us. And when we negotiate, we pay raises the same to the union and non-union people, and we've been very fortunate to have the ability to get long-term contracts with reasonable raises. And so I think... I don't know why we feel it's our job to poke holes in things that are going well. It's great to ask questions and to get the understanding and to see dollars and cents-wise where our taxpayers' money goes, but what you're being presented here is a balanced budget with a small surplus, with everything paid for, and keeping our reserve fund where it's supposed to be. To me, that's great management. Give yourselves a hand, all of you, because you're part of that as the council. And we have good, strong fiscal management in this city, and we don't waste money on anything, and we manage to do more with less than any other jurisdiction I know. We don't have a debt. We're not $7 million or $9 million or $11 million in debt. We don't owe a lot of money to anyone. And so, you know, this is a well-run city with great employees, a good council, and working together, we can keep doing those things. Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mayor. To respond to Alderman Snow, yeah, the common citizen would go by and see everything's just doing well at the Fire Department. Honestly, the way I look at it, from 2015, this is a very different Fire Department. Insiders would know, all right? It's hard to be in here and tell everybody what we're doing down there in 10 minutes, all right? I feel that from 2015, May of 2015, that we've made leaps and bounds, but we're... I'm plateaued right now. We're absolutely, we're right here. I want to go here. And that's what I'm looking for in this position right here. Take us to another level. We're doing things, and as the gentleman next to you, he can attest to it. There was probably things done back in the years that, when he was on the department, that you might not agree with. I'm slowly and surely getting rid of things like that. I'm trying to make this a, you know, really well-run Fire Department. But I need help now, and I have. But I've been doing the job. If you go by, if, you know, if you're happening to be going through town, it lights on? Usually it's on later than most people have been already... People have been home by then. I'm still there. I'm giving what I can. I got 56 hours in last week. After a while, I need some help. So that's where I'm at, okay?
Okay. Becky, you want to move ahead? Or do we have any other questions about this topic? Okay, Becky?
Next, we had a... I mean, I'll keep scrolling down. We had community development. There were a couple increases for our planner and a small increase for the electrical inspector for R and R. R and R, they are contracted. If you recall, there are contracted electrical inspectors. They get a monthly stipend regardless of how many inspections they do. If there's any questions, you can... If anybody wants to talk about those, otherwise, we can always move on to the street department, to the maintenance worker. The maintenance? Yes, the maintenance, that would be an additional employee in the street department.
Yes, Alderman Sanderson?
I was just going to say, the maintenance worker, that's been a long time coming. We've been holding back on a street department for a long time, and some people have had some increases, but they've been working shorthanded for a long time, so I support that. Thank you.
Are we on the facade grant now?
Yeah, and if anybody has anything for administration, which would be the facade grant, and the really awkward one would be my raise.
I have a comment about the facade. I would rather this is called an entrepreneur's fund for businesses, because I think in doing that, we can get help from some of the other agencies like Growth Dimensions in the Chamber to possibly partner with us to offer opportunities to new businesses. We've repainted the front end of every building downtown a couple of times in the last decade for those buildings that participated. So I think it needs to be broader in scope, and also any work that gets done, and this has been a concern of mine from jump, we've had work downtown that doesn't adhere to our regulations. We can go walk downtown right now and see a bunch of signs that are not permissible and repairs that need to be made, the awnings that are flapping and those kinds of things. So I think it's good to have a look at a project that we all agree on that needs to be done and somebody coming forward and saying, "Can you help us with this?" And you were talking about only a limit on each grant?
Right, we were looking at a... We would do a matching grant up to 5,000. So if they came to us with a project of 10,000 or more, we could potentially give them 5,000. It was a little bit higher if there was more frontage, such as some of your corner buildings, your buildings that sit on the corner that actually have two frontages. Those grants could be up to 7,500. But obviously, that, you know, would come back before you, and you would make the final decision. And it is a reimbursable grant, so they would not receive the money until everything was okayed, that we know that they followed what they were supposed to do. And we have a whole agenda set out to come to you, you know, a whole packet of information and application process, and you'd be able to look at all that before this program was officially approved.
Now, no problem with it being exterior stuff? And I agree with Alderman Sanderson, he made the point that last time around, this was administered by someone else, people did not abide by the rules and money was directed to things that were used to purchase fixtures for inside the stores, and that's not right. Alderman Snow?
Well, I'm not a big fan. I'm not going to vote no, but one question, when I think about the stuff downtown, generically speaking, we don't allow neon signs on the outside of the building. We also have amounts to a lot of neon sign and/or digital displays scrolling across inside, which we don't control. And I was wondering, with and when this comes up, if we can exercise, or do we want to exercise, control over some of those items? Just tossing that out there as a generic conversation, or we can bring this up at a committee meeting later on.
Do you want? You are correct. Animated signs, digital signs, internally illuminated signs are not permitted downtown. However, we cannot regulate what the business does inside their building, which is why you'll see a lot hanging inside inches away, so you can see it through the window, because we cannot regulate the inside. And also, when you start regulating signage, you have to be very careful. There is a lot of federal case law with signage, context versus content and all that other fun stuff. So it can be a little bit of a slippery slope.
And I can say, the one thing Gina and I have talked about, and she would agree, is when we talk about this facade program, it will...
There are several buildings that have their windows covered with really weathered old plywood or bricked in. It would help to restore that back to windows, proper door openings, maybe even some ADA compliance stuff. There has been some downtown buildings that had potential businesses and when they realized what needed to be do for, what needed to be done for ADA, that became an issue. So permanent fixtures like that, that improve the building.
Yes, Alderman Sanderson?
And while we're talking about it, we have new building inspector, I guess he's not here anymore. But, you know, I've had some business people say that they just, they feel like it takes a long time to get some stuff approved. And if there's any way we can streamline that to help stimulate business downtown and still keep the integrity of what we're trying to see, as a council member, I've always been open to look at it, ways to streamline stuff. I don't know why some people feel that it takes longer here, it's just maybe the way we have it set up, but whatever we need to do to streamline that and still keep things okay, I'd be willing to look at that again.
Do you want me to?
Good point. Alderman Brooks?
I think when we think about streamlining, we're thinking about additional people in certain departments to help process these things and we just don't have it, I don't think, Mark. And perhaps we can hire more people, but I'm sure that wouldn't go over well.
I do know in speaking to developers, the comments come depending on where they're coming from, frankly. If they're used to coming from communities that have no building codes or very limited building codes, things like that, they think it takes a long time. You talk to more experienced developers that have constructed in a large variety of communities, they're usually amazed by how fast we work. So I think it depends on where they're used to working. I do know that if they supply a full set of plans, our department turns it around very quickly, as does the fire department. Once they come in, the plans are immediately shipped to the fire department for any review for fire code purposes. And our commercial inspectors have always done a good job of turning it around pretty quickly and that's why it's always been good to have in-house commercial inspector, as opposed to having to farm it out to a BNF technical or some third party that could take longer to get it back. So we turn them around pretty quickly. Where you run into issues is where they design under the wrong code. They don't bother looking at our website to see that we're under the, I think it's the 2015 codes now. And so, if they send it back to them and say, oops, your architect, your design professional designed under the wrong code. And then it starts taking time because it's going back and forth. But if they submit plans that are compliant with the code, usually they turn it around pretty quickly.
We started a process here in thirteen that when a business comes here, first of all, I want them to be introduced to the mayor so we understand what, who they are and what they're doing. Secondly, if they're doing something that needs the attention of our city departments, we all sit down together in a meeting with them whenever possible so that we cover that right away. And to add on to what Mike said, most of the time when things get dragged out, it's because the person, the business or the person we're working with doesn't get the stuff to us that we require to be able to approve it. And, you know, I suppose we could look at, you know, right now, everything takes a month to get through this group because, you know, it comes to committee of the whole and it goes to council and it goes to committee of the whole and then to council. So we could discuss ways, and right now, we can, you know, we can vote to not do the two-week layover, but we can take a look at some other ways to be able to do that and make things go faster. Yes?
What do you think they're maybe talking about, especially use taking the long time? I mean, if, if we have certain things set in place, it should just, shouldn't have to go to council for some things.
Well, by current statute, I'm sorry, by current statute and by the way your code's set up, a lot of development does require special use or variance or what have you. Well, then, by itself, it's going to take anywhere between six months and, six weeks and two months to get through. That's how, didn't mean to say six months, six weeks to two months. Because you've got a published plan and zoning, there's fifteen to thirty days notice on publication there. They've got to get in time for Gina to prepare the staff reports for the upcoming month. Then, once it gets done with planning and zoning, you figure that at least another two weeks after that before this body approves that ordinance. So certainly zoning could take a while, but it's kind of hard to short-circuit that under your current codes.
Gina?
I just wanted, like Attorney Drela said, for variants of special uses, rezonings, tax amendments, items like that, by state law, you have to publish it in a paper so that bumps the application deadline up. If it is a case where I've been communicating with the applicant and I know is coming in, I will extend the deadline for them. You know, if they're two, three days late, I'll still accept it if it's one that I've been anticipating because I, you know, instead of making them wait a whole month. In regards to the timeframe, when I first started here, it went to plan commission, then it went to committee of the whole, and then it went to first reading and then second reading. So since then, we've taken the committee of the whole aspect out in order to shave almost a month off the timeframe for those items. Now, obviously, as like with the chickens, if it gets to city council and you guys do have questions, you can then choose to send it back to committee of the whole for further discussion. But furthermore, streamlined ones, we have already tried to speed up the process. As far as process in-house, we are quicker than a lot of other communities that I work with because we're always checking in with each other, you know, to see how other communities handle it. Signage, you can make an appointment that day, come in and get your sign permit. If it's a downtown overlay review, I will get that done. I try within forty-eight hours, but never more than by the end of the week that that application came in. As far as the bigger prints, yeah, they're, they're returned by nine days. It goes to Public Works Fire Planning and Building and with nine days, they have their comments. Now, sometimes people come in and they don't realize they need an architectural stamp drawing or stuff like that and that's when a resident gets upset because they don't see why they have to submit the plans that show what they're doing. And that can add time then, but we have, in the, since I've started, done a lot to streamline the process, to make it as user-friendly and hopefully with Kip's appointment and things we've discussed for the department, we're, are working on other things to make it more streamlined and more user-friendly for the community.
One place, Alderman Grover?
Yeah, I had a quick question. We don't hear much about murals anymore, but if somebody wanted to fix a mural on the side of their building, would that be covered under the facade? Would we be willing to help them with something like that?
Becky, what are your feelings about that?
I don't know. We'd have to talk about that. I know the Arts Council is still active with the murals and they do receive money from the city. So I guess I would steer them in that direction first.
We have a matching program with the Arts Council for mural maintenance and refurbishment. Yeah, every year. Alderman Snow?
Thanks. What is the purpose of the two-week layover in the first place? And should, on zoning matters, take more of a proactive deal on waiving that to get them the extra two weeks?
The two-week layover, it's not unique to Belvedere, but it's not required by any state statute. It's something that's written in your own code. I presume the reason was so that the alderman would have a plethora of time within which to review actions coming before it, ask questions that the relevant department has if they wanted to, and then make an informed decision when it came to a vote. Essentially, because most things go to committee first, then it goes to a first reading and then there's a two-week layover. You get effectively a month's worth of time to review anything before you're required to vote on it. You could certainly, if you wanted to, eliminate that requirement from your codes. If you do do so, though, I would do it for all ordinances, not pick and choose the ones you want to do it for, just for consistency purposes. But there's no requirement to do it and simply be changing your ordinances.
Could we ask for that topic to be put on an agenda for future, just to discuss it?
Of course we can. What would be very instrumental for all of us? You all have code book and it gets updated every year, is to take the time, and there are ten aldermen, so divided into ten pieces, and everybody go through that code with a red pen and things that don't make any sense or that you have questions about or you think that we could do away with or improve, just mark it. I mean, we, we have been doing that. We've eliminated and changed a number of things over the past few years that were just not, didn't make any sense, you know? And I, I think that we try to over-regulate everything and sometimes we get caught in the minutia of things that are really things that hinder our being able to do exactly what we were talking about. But it requires everybody to kind of take a look at it and weigh in on it and share your opinions about different sections of the code that concern you. Alderman Snow?
And that's a good idea, Mayor. I agree. The other question pertains to budgetary and you'd mentioned the building inspector and we're down an inspector besides the department head. So is that position in the current budget to fill that void?
We did leave that position in the budget and it will be up to your new director how he wants to fill that, if he feels, you know, once he gets in here, if he thinks he needs a full-time, if he thinks he needs a part-time. So we left that up to him.
Okay, thank you. Kip is talking about, he thinks there's a lot of the inspections he can get to himself, but we'll see how it works. Okay, what's next?
If there's anything left on this you want to discuss, otherwise I can pull up capital. We still need to talk about the mini pumper. Let me go back. Okay, I'm trying to make this bigger. Okay, so in the previous copy of the capital schedule that you received, I did not include the pumper in there and this one I have. And you'll see here, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars would be budgeted using fire impact fee money. And then the remaining hundred thousand or whatever the balance is would need to be budgeted in the following year, in fiscal year twenty-one with general fund money. So, fire department does have about two hundred thousand dollars sitting in capital, which is from impact fee revenues. I do not recommend spending all that. That is emergency, some of that needs to be used for emergency reserve for capital in case something were to come up. But I was comfortable using a portion of it since this is important to the chief, so.
Alderman Snow?
So Becky, in the beginning of the budget, when we had a thirty thousand surplus, this includes the hundred and twenty-five thousand, or no?
This does not include that because that money is already in the capital fund. It is not in the general fund. So this would be an additional capital expense, but we don't have to use any general fund money for next year.
So the third is still going for the general fund balance?
Right.
Money's been allocated to the capital fund for this purchase.
So would we, the next year that we would take it out of the general fund?
Correct.
So at this point, this would be just a shell game of moving it out of his impact fee capital money.
Correct.
Alderman Sanderson?
I was just going to show the capital budget. I don't know if that would help kind of explain. Here's your, so what we're talking about would come out of this vehicles line item, this three hundred sixty-seven eight, oh, you can't see, I need to, I keep having to blow it up. So the number I'm talking about is on this vehicles line item, this three hundred sixty-seven thousand eight twenty-eight for expenditures includes a hundred and twenty-five thousand of that is the mini pumper. If you choose to not purchase the mini pumper, we would subtract or remove a hundred and twenty-five thousand from that line item. And then it would just remain in the capital fund because that two hundred thousand can only be used for fire.
Alderman Sanderson?
So when I introduced impact fees for the fire and police some years ago and this council or other council members approved it, impact fees were not to be, they were to be used for the impact of what our city needed, like a new pumper. I didn't see it as a reserve fund. Our reserve funds are a whole separate thing in a budget, our reserve funds. So I don't see any problem with using two hundred thousand dollars because that is for the impact of needing a new pumper that we got from development that we were paid impact fees for.
Yeah, I don't have a problem spending some of it. Like I said, it's emergency in my mind, it's, it's also emergency capital. If for some reason we got into a, something or, you know, all of a sudden, you know, what happened last year or two years ago where we didn't, you know, we had to go into reserves to balance the budget, but something catastrophic happened and we needed to purchase a capital item, this, this money could be used for that.
And I've just worried sometimes that sometimes we weren't using them for the original intent. And I think this is an original intent. That's all, I just wanted to make that point.
We always want to keep fifty percent of what we got someplace, so, just, just in case because a lot of us were here in two thousand and eight, saw what happened.
So the, this is a two-payment procedure and when would we get, we order the truck and it takes a year or something for our close to it to get it?
Yeah, something like that would take about eight, eight, eight months to a year.
So we would be making a down payment with the money and if we needed to, next year, if we didn't really think the general fund budget slash paying out of reserves would be a prudent thing, we could go ahead and take it out, more out of his impact fee. Like Mark said, that's what it was kind of for.
We could if we needed to, yes.
For a down payment and, and then the rest is, we worry about next year, is what you're saying, right?
Correct. Yeah, we'd make a larger payment this year, one twenty-five, and then whatever the balance is.
Yes, Chief?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to remind the council that we are operating frontline with a two thousand two fire engine. And spent all, last week was in maintenance and then we got it back and it went right back in. So it's definitely on its last leg. It's got a hundred and forty thousand miles on it and sixteen some odd years, seventeen years old. So it's, it's inevitable, it's going to happen. We need, we need to replace it, so.
This is a transition vehicle that'll help give us a little more shelf life with one fifty and then make the transition to, because a brand-new fire engine ladder truck, a million bucks. So we want to try to conserve what we can serve and the, the smaller truck is much more agile and for all the calls that we make that are not essential tower buyer calls, et cetera, this will work extremely well. There's a pretty big body of evidence now of using these trucks on a national basis that save money and they have water on board, they can do a lot of things.
Yeah, it's, the way I look at it, it is like a Swiss Army knife in a sense. It does do a lot of different things. I just want the council to know too, though, that eventually another engine has to come into play, okay? This is a way of getting us a couple of years down the road and be able to respond to our citizens' needs right now. Like I said, the two thousand two, it's about done. Is if you ever want to come up to station two and, and see what we got there, you'll, you'll see it's in need of repair and it's, like I said, it was in there all last week and again, it's, it's in there this week. So right now, we're operating with ladder one fifty, which, as the mayor has said, you know, the next time we have to purchase a ladder truck, it's going to be a one-point-two-million-dollar expenditure for the city of Belvedere.
Alderman Sanderson?
Oh, and another reason I like the smaller one is because people have complained about the big ladder truck using up a lot of gas going out there, and that's going to happen sometimes. But if we can use, utilize that smaller one with, takes less gas, takes up less space and, and that can also help supplement till we get the other one, I think it's a good investment for the amount of money that we're spending on compared to, you know, for, for today. You know, maybe later on, we'll have some more revenue or maybe somewhere out east, we might have some more money coming in that we can, have a little bit more money coming in so we can afford a truck better, a bigger one.
Anybody else?
And the old fire truck, he can drive, that's his command vehicle.
And the old fire truck, he can drive, that's his command vehicle.
It'll be safe.
He's laughing, he's serious.
Ms. Tobin?
Is there anything else you wanted to look at? Anything else on this capital schedule that anybody had a question on? Because right now, all of this is in, everything but the mini pumper is, will be paid for using general fund money that will move to the capital fund. That's basically how it works.
Yes, Chief.
Thanks, Mayor. I just do, also want to remind everybody too, I'm available downtown anytime you have any questions pertaining to this stuff, because I know this is not common, common knowledge for most people. And come on down to Station One, and I'd be happy to explain to you anything. For instance, Alderman Porter, thanks for coming down the other day and visiting with me. And Mrs. Frank, so appreciate that. I'm always available down there, so, thank you.
Thanks for that, Jabe, and I was always told on my blog, that you could always find an answer out to someone, every time you know you're on that email, there's always somebody who's hooked, just like I have. It's always been hard to find the answer, I support you for not wanting to do it.
Hi.
I guess tonight, if there is anything that you wanted removed, it would be very helpful if you did that tonight. I have to finish the ordinance tomorrow. That has to go to the city clerk, and then the first reading of the entire budget ordinance is next Monday. So it is helpful.
Yes, Alderman Snow.
And on a different note, and maybe it's in there and it's just so many numbers, so the impact fee money that the fire department has is in some fund. Is that listed in all those budget pages somewhere that we get?
It is. All the impact fee money sits in the capital fund right now, or I should say 95% of it. What happened is it used to sit in the impact fee fund, and the auditors made me move it about a year and a half ago, because anything that was considered city money, anything that wasn't sitting in escrow, that was the developers' or was the school district's, park district's money, anything that was city, police, fire, public works, administration, interest, all had to get moved to the capital fund. And that was about 600 and, about 642,000.
So there's really nothing in our world that itemizes that type of fundage? It's just you knowing somewhere with a tick mark that, yeah, this money was intended, but now it's thrown into the general fund?
It's in the capital, and it's still itemized by department. So I know exactly how much impact fee money is his, I know exactly how much money is police, I know exactly how much is public works, what's administration, what's interest, so I have all that.
Could we get copies of that?
Absolutely.
Alderman Sanderson.
A reminder on Becky's salary. You were going for what, five or six percent instead of two percent of everybody else? What was that, what is your salary now, and what is it projected to be?
Per the mayor's request two weeks ago, it's the two percent plus an additional five.
So that's a seven percent increase?
Right, comes out to 7.1 actually, but.
So Becky, your salary right now is what?
Seventy-six, four fifty-seven.
Bring it up to what?
Eighty-one, eight eighty-seven.
And what are some of the comparables for your job in other cities around the area?
So these are some of the comparables within our area.
Kind of looked at like Chesney Park and Cherry Valley, but they're lower than some of the other towns around.
Well, and their duties are different, too.
What's different about you, huh?
Okay, treasurer just is basically an accountant in a city, like we have a treasurer. They're salaried, they have broader accounting requirement, but they also don't do all of the things that Becky does with the audits and everything else. And, you know, village treasurers, you look at, you have to look apples to apples what the actual duties of that individual are. Everybody around here that's in the administrative category kind of doubles their duty to help out with whatever needs to be done. And so, you know, Becky's expertise, maybe some of you don't remember, but Becky was the assistant administrator of the county for 14 years. So she weighs in on more than just doing the bookwork.
Mr. Mayor, this is the first time I've seen this document. Many of those communities actually have a city manager as well, whose one of their primary functions is going to be to lead the development of the budget and create the budget. That falls upon Ms. Tobin's job responsibilities now. So a lot of those functions that she does are actually performed by a city manager in a lot of municipalities. I'm pretty sure Los Park has a city manager, I believe Cherry Valley does or did, Marengo does, DeKalb does, I think they've got two or three. Rochelle's got a city manager and two or three assistant managers.
These people have staff, I have no staff. The auditors, not just in my position, but they're, they just can't believe what a skeleton crew we run around here for the size of organization that we are.
And I think it's important for me to share this. I've tried to give Becky a raise the past two or three years, and she said, no, let's wait until things improve and are a little more solid. And so this year, I pushed it, and I said, I'm going to propose it anyway, because, you know, you reward the people that do the work. And the IGFOA will tell you there isn't anybody better at their job than Becky. Anybody else got anything else they want to say right at the moment, because I want to ask for a motion? A motion to forward the budget as presented to city council?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by Alderman Snow. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it'll be forwarded to city council for further deliberation. Thank you all very much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, second by, second by Alderman Borowitz. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now adjourned, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.